Order our special Tiffin City Council meeting for July 11th, 2022. Our invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led this evening by Councilmember Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please listen as I recite the Saint Michael, the Archangel prayer. Saint Michael, the Archangel, defend us in battle. Be our protection against the wickedness and snares of the devil. May God rebuke him, we humbly pray. And do thou, Prince of heavenly host, by the power of God cast into hell Satan and all evil spirits who prowl about the world seeking to ruin of souls. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry, for the wonderful prayer and leading of the pledge. I'll ask Council Clerk Forrest to take the roll, please.
Councilmember Perry.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Here.
Councilmember Gillig.
Here.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Present.
Councilmember Leopard.
Here.
And Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
As the records show, that seven of the seven council members are here. This is a special meeting announcement. This is a notice in compliance with the charter, Section 309B, to announce a special meeting of Tiffin City Council on Monday, July 11th, 2022, at 6:00 PM in council chambers at City Hall. For consideration, to discuss any additional questions regarding the mayoral candidates, proceed with the council's vote on the same and any other business council may consider. So I would like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's wonderful to see a packed chambers. I was not planning on pulling a Baltimore Colts and skipping town before having to actually vote. I went into muscle memory and thought the meeting was at 7:00. So my apologies for that. My apologies for keeping everyone waiting. We do not have any minutes to review at this time. Does anybody happen to have a committee report? I would imagine there are none this evening. Does anyone see a need for a committee of the whole at this time? Would like to move on to reports of the officers. Her Honor Acting Mayor Bridget Boyle.
Thank you, yeah. Really, my only statement is for you, Ben, and given your resignation, of the news of your resignation, I wanted to thank you, obviously, for your role as a council member, but also your various, you know, volunteer work throughout the city and the commitment that you've had, specifically the trivia. That's my favorite. But no, all in all, thank you very much. You've been awesome to work with on council. Been a great sounding board at times, and I just want to wish you and your family the best. So, thank you.
Well, I really, I really appreciate that, Mayor Boyle. And, you know, if I can say publicly, I, you know, fell into the trap that sometimes we do in local politics and, you know, I trust the word of people that, you know, I didn't get a chance to get to know you. And then I remember just the first week, I was like, holy geez, this, geez, for real. And I've just been, I've been so impressed and, you know, it's, it's really cool that, you know, I got to go out with the first female president of council and also the first female mayor.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. Yeah, we'll miss you, for sure.
Absolutely.
That's all I had, yeah. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Clerk of Council Anne Forrest.
No report, Mr. President.
Been a wacky few months, hasn't it? Director of Finance Kathy Kaufman is not here this evening. Director of Law Brent T. Howard.
No report, Mr. President.
Wonderful. Do we have any written communications this evening?
No, Mr. President, no.
Okay. At this time, we are under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address council, please feel free to come to the microphone, sign in, and direct your questions to Council President. Seeing none, we will move on to motions. We have no motions. We will move on to resolutions.
They're not on the general list, there's a motion.
Okay, okay. So, we're just, we're getting right into it, then. It seems. So, what I'd like to do with council is just sort of see how you'd like to proceed. Do we want to ask additional questions of our candidates? And how do we want to, is there any specific format in which we wish to do that? Or do we just want this to be more of a freewheeling, open exchange of ideas? And I'm certainly open to any suggestion. Councilmember Perry.
I would like a chance. I had some questions to each member, to each candidate, if I could. And I don't know if any other council members do as well, but at least a chance to ask my questions here.
Absolutely. Now, do we want to each take our turn asking questions of each candidate? Or do we want to, to break that up somehow to get a better flow? How do we, how do you suppose we can make this the most efficient, I suppose?
I know Mr. Leopard wanted to be able to see the candidates and be able to see their facial reactions in their eyes. So maybe as we ask our questions, maybe the candidates could come to the podium? Is that okay, or how would you?
I think podium or, yeah, I think podium would probably.
I'd take some people out of the front rows to let, to let them sit there. So I think the intention, I think, was to have Councilwoman Yanatuno and Councilman Perkins in the front row there, just for the question and answer portion.
Okay, that would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. Councilmember Jones.
Oh, I'm just gonna, we spoke last meeting, I believe, that tried to get them in the front row if the front row wasn't full.
Yep.
Very well stated, as I remember that very well. So, let's just proceed. Councilmember Perry, you have your questions ready to go, and we can kind of go from there.
If you guys want to.
We're gonna move up front.
That's perfect.
See yourself out. Would you like me to go first?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. First, just to all of you, I want to thank you again. It really takes courage to go for this position in this format, to kind of put yourself out there. Obviously, you know, people are going to, especially from the public, maybe say mean things about you, say nice things about you. And, you know, you really just do put yourself out there. So, I liked reading through all you guys' resumes. You definitely are all qualified. I was excited about this list, so first, just wanted to say that. So thank you all for, you know, going for this position. I know all you guys' hearts is really in the right place. First, I'm gonna start with Bryce, if you don't mind. So I kind of took time and thought about, obviously, I think you guys do a lot of good things. You know, I think you all do a lot of great things. Kind of what I think of the biggest criticism of each of you and how you were, would respond to that. Obviously, Mayor Motz was kind of an exception to the rule, being, you know, so young and doing it so well. How would you respond to someone saying that you are too young for this position?
For me, I think it's what makes Tiffin special for me, honestly, is that I got started in this community at a very young age. You know, being raised here, educated here, I got to be involved earlier than most. And so for me, yes, I am young, but I think that's what honestly is, for me, is, it's, it's exciting that we could, I can live in a community like Tiffin, Ohio. I can grow up here, do things professionally, and really make an impact, whether I be, you know, I started honestly making an impact about the age of, you know, significant impact around 20 years of age. And so for me, you know, some of my colleagues at Heidelberg University were having, you know, house parties and were doing those kind of things. I wasn't. So I was running, you know, Bill Reinecke's campaign for state representative his first term. And then from there, I just, you know, focused on my studies and really focused on, you know, what was important to me. And what was important to me was living in a community that I can make an impact on. So, you know, for me, again, I think the whole age thing is, is an asset to have. You know, Aaron Motz got elected when he was 26 years of age. Fortunately, I'm three years older than that, 29. A few, probably gray hairs more than he had when he first got elected. But again, I'll say, for me, it's an asset to live in a community that allows young people to grow up, be successful. It kind of is a testament to where we've gone.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
My next question's gonna be to Mr. Cole. Obviously, you've been away from Tiffin for a long time. What would you say to someone that says, why did it take you so long to come back? I mean, if they want somebody that's, really loves Tiffin, obviously, someone that doesn't leave, you know, might like it more, they might argue. So, wanted to know your thoughts on that.
Well, you know, I left Tiffin to go to college originally and, you know, just started into my career in coaching right after I graduated from school. But I've always been back to Tiffin. My parents have lived here for 55 years. And, you know, they've, they've lived in the same house for the whole time they've been here. But I always came home, even when I was, even when I was in, living in a different city, Tiffin was always my home. I always made sure I was back. I knew what was going on. My, my father and my stepmother always kept me informed what was going on in town and always tried to, always tried to stay up, up to breath with what was going on and the changes that were being made. And, you know, I, like I said, fortunately, I've had a chance to live through Tiffin, through good times, bad times, awful times, and now exceptionally good times, thanks to, thanks to Mayor Motz and the hard work he's put in. But I don't think having to be here, you know, living here means you love the town any less. It just, that's where my career had taken me. And I was ready to move back years ago, but I had to wait till my wife's career and things like that settled in. And when we had the chance to make the move, that was, this was our first place to, to think about moving to.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep.
My next question is for Dawn. I just wrote your first names in order, so that's, honestly. Dawn, only seeking one term, what would you say to someone that would say it'd be better, long-term, for Tiffin, to kind of get a preview of what someone else could do?
You mean why I'm, basically, why I'm not running?
Correct, yeah.
I had this conversation earlier today, and I didn't know if I wanted to actually go at it this way, but I think I should. Having been on the Tiffin City School Board for as long as I was, I was also a small business owner at the time. And I can honestly say that every time a vote would have affected my business, I still did my job and I still voted what was best for the district, not necessarily what was best for me personally. And in this case, with the mayor position, I want to be able to come in here, do the best job I can, and not have to worry about decisions possibly having people not wanting to vote for me. It's kind of freeing to know that you can do what you know is best and not have to worry about, oh, did that decision make somebody not want to vote for me? Is that gonna affect my being reelected? People are tired of partisan politics at the higher level. They're tired of the anger. And I just want to get away from that. I just want to keep us moving forward in the path that Aaron's got us going on and then leave it so that somebody, these other candidates possibly could run in a year and a half, ready to go, and not be compared to Aaron. They'll be compared to possibly me or an improvement over me or whatever. And I, I just think that's good for Tiffin, to give them a break in between. We're doing this really fast. And I, I know I have the experience to move forward with it. And I just don't want to have to go at worrying about if I'll be reelected or not, or elected or not. I just want to get the job done and done right.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilmember. All right, Mr. Perkins. Obviously, you're pretty new at this. You've been on council for, you know, over a year, slightly over a year, I think, right?
Yeah, about a year and a half.
Year and a half.
Yep.
What would you say to someone that just says you don't have enough experience within politics or, you know, this kind of government to, to be mayor?
Well, I think a lack of experience in politics is probably a good thing. I think a lot of it is a standpoint of having a lot of business experience, a lot of fiscal responsibility and experience in that area. I think that's huge going into the recession that's looming. I mean, we're at the beginning stages of that. There's every sign points to that, from the stock market to interest rates, everything else. You know, and I, I've been through two of those myself, business-wise. So I think that I'm best to handle the fiscal responsibility.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks.
That's all I had, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry. Councilmember Wilkins, would you like to ask any questions of any of the candidates?
Yeah, I have one question that I'd like each candidate to answer. So it doesn't really matter what order. I guess we can stick with the same order that they just did, or?
Yeah, or they can just go in order.
Okay, that's fine.
Left or right?
I want to echo Councilman Perry. Thank you all for applying for this position. I think it's amazing that, like he said, you guys threw your names in the hat, and I can tell you all want to do what's right for the city of Tiffin. So I really commend you for putting yourself out there. It's really admirable. So, my question, when people speak of former Mayor Motz, some words used, used to describe his tenure are economic growth, progress, engaged, stability, fiscal responsibility. When people describe you in your tenure as mayor, should you be selected? How do you want people to describe you? You may go first. We could go left or right, yeah.
As I keep mentioning, the Tiffin City School Board, they always teased and called me the board cheerleader. And I think I would like to be known as the cheerleader for Tiffin. And I think Aaron has left us with a high bar to raise because he already is a cheerleader for Tiffin. But I think that's the main thing for me. I want them to know that I cared, did my job, and was always out there rooting for us. So, we're cheering for Tiffin. did my job, and was always out there rooting for us. So we're cheerleader. Thank you.
I think a couple, a couple of words that would help describe, number one would be resilient. I think that's going to be crucial during this time. You're walking into probably the biggest shoes to ever be in Tiffin. So it's pretty intimidating for a lot of people. So you must be resilient to the backlash that's gonna happen. No matter who goes into this role, it's going to be very tough to follow. So, you know, like Councilman Perry said, there's a lot of courage that goes into that. So resilience, fiscal conservative is huge. And I believe dynamic is also a big indicator. So you must have the energy and the passion. But on the other side, it's always a moving part, you know, so you've got multitasking going there and everything's ever-changing. So.
Thank you.
Great question, Councilperson. Wilkins, I would say three things, right? So one is passionate. I think that shows through any candidate. I think, look at my past track record, you can see I'm passionate and truly love this community. I think it's probably the most important thing because if, you know, you're passionate and your heart's in the right place, generally speaking, you make the right decisions for the community. I would say, you know, secondarily for me, would be, you know, business-minded. I think through my experience with the chamber and my years with the Tiffin Economic Economic Partnership, having a mindset of business, so making those decisions, whether it be fiscal decisions, whether they be operational decisions, whether they be, you know, HR decisions, working in partnership with the team, understanding, you know, how do you become, do more with less, and then also make business decisions that really impact our community here. You know, the mayor's job and role is, you know, really work with the economic development chamber folks to ensure this is a business-friendly climate. So having that in mind. And then third, I think, is the cheerleader aspect. And again, mayor's role, I think, is really to, you know, be passionate about this community, but also being a cheerleader, not only for this community, but also the employees of the city. Because I think that shows through. If the individual that's in charge, you know, communicates well, is out there and really is the biggest hype person for the city and the employees, it goes a long way. So I think those are the three words I would use.
Thank you.
Well, good question. And it's always hard to go last on questions like that because you feel like you're copying everybody else. But things I want people to be able to speak good about me was, it was somebody who came in and yes, we have huge shoes to fill, but continued to keep the city moving forward, kept it on track economically. But I want to be a leader. I want people to look at me as leader. I want to be known as being transparent. And I want somebody to say, you know, hey, he had a great passion for his hometown and for his city. And, you know, I think that'll all show through with, with how you handle things going forward with the city. And, but yes, the city, I'll steal a little bit from Bryce, the city employees are very, very important, you know, our first responders, our other employees of the city, and even the, even the store owners, you know, you have, as mayor, I want to be there for them and help them improve their business and help their, their moving forward as well.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Councilmember Wilkins?
Thank you.
I'm going to skip over myself in the order. Councilmember Yana Tuno, are there any additional questions or any dialogue you would like to have with any of the candidates? Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't think of it until I heard the other two. I wanted to thank all four of you for putting your hat in the ring. I've heard that before. So thank you for going that route. Two of the council members, Ms. Wilkins and Mr. Perry, have taken two of my questions. One was going to be, what are you four going to do your first 100 days in office? But someone beat me to that. And then what was Councilman Perry? Let me forget what yours was. Doesn't matter. Anyways, I have a question for Mr. Cole. I know you've been away from Tiffin for approximately 30 years and you've been back to Tiffin approximately one year. Are you, and you've stated you were gonna keep your other job along with being mayor, have you reconsidered not having two jobs and being a dedicated full-time mayor and not a part-time mayor?
Right. Nice thing about my job that I have currently, it's appointment-based. So I'm very flexible with being able to work around, you know, both positions. I have struggled with the idea, but I think through the first, this first term, I would, I would continue to stay on with my job and then reevaluate at the end of, at the end of the term in December and decide, you know, if then if, you know, I, if I, if everybody likes me in town and still aren't throwing things at my house and all that kind of stuff and would want me to run for another term, I would run. And if, in that case, I would step away from my other job.
Okay, thank you. And next was Councilmember Yana Tuno. And what I was gonna ask you, but Councilman Perry talked about, will you reconsider, my question was gonna be, will you reconsider your previous statement about only being a mayor for 18 months? But I think Councilman Perry asked that. And just a repeat question from the last time. I know you were, and I called a small business owner, and the $40 million budget that the mayor looks over, I was going to ask again, what experience do you have with a 40-plus million dollar budget?
Well, I've been on council for six years now and I serve on the Finance Committee. And with Tiffin City Schools, I oversaw a $25 million budget as their board president and also served as the chair of the Finance Committee several years. And so I am familiar with large budgets. And I'm also familiar with negotiations. I've negotiated union and non-union contracts, and so I'm familiar with that, too. So, and that's a big part of the budget.
Thank you. And next in alphabetical order, Councilmember Perkins. I'm not sure if this is a... I've received several emails, just come right out, and think someone's innocent until proven guilty. I've received several emails the last week or so, phone calls, hearsay. And I just don't have a real question. I just think people are innocent until they're proven guilty. And I asked a few of these people, give me a name, give me a date, give me a place, give me something in writing. And only one person did that and the rest of them were what I call hearsay. So I really don't have a question for you.
Okay. Can I answer something just for some transparency? Is that okay?
Yes, for me, you can.
Please.
Well, I've stopped the president, I'm sorry.
Something that I know was brought up in emails to council members was what I'm currently doing and who I currently work with. I actually work with three different companies. One of those companies is Periot, and that is a rental company here in town. One of the owners of that company is Councilman Perry. So people know. I don't know if people know that. Another one is Big Mike's, operator for that facility also. Mr. Perry is also a co-owner with that. And then there's the third company called RBI, which is a nationwide company. So that has nothing to do with anything local. So I know there was some questioning about that. I think people are trying to, I was trying to maybe hide that or something along those lines, and I wasn't by any means. And Mr. Perry and any other owners that I'm dealing with all know that if anything would happen with this position, that all of those operations would cease immediately. So I would no longer be involved with any of those companies. So it's something I wanted to bring up.
Okay.
So, thank you.
And then one for Mr. Riggs. And I've talked about, Mr. Riggs here, I've mentioned to several people, he's doing such a fine job at the chamber that I thought maybe he would be better serving the community of Tiffin by staying where he's at. Several people said, why would I penalize Mr. Riggs for doing a good job and keeping him from where he's at? So I got that going in my head. And then you've worked, correct me if I'm wrong, you've worked at Tiffin University for a short period of time. And I'm not sure what a short period of time is. You worked for TCEP for a short period of time. Now you're with the chamber. Now you're looking to change positions. Is this mayor thing going to be an 18-month thing and move on? Or what's your vision there?
So I'll answer a couple parts of that question. So first of all, obviously, when I chose to pursue this role, I had long conversations with both my board chair and members of my executive committee on what my path was. I can tell you through my deep discussions with them and a lot of the folks that I consider to be mentors in this community, you know, said to me, Bryce, this is the opportunity, right? Some people, the idea of replacing Aaron Motts was, is scary, but for me, it's exciting. One, because he's got a great track record. And two, I believe a lot of the skill sets that he has. So I will say, I placed a lot of thought in discussion about the idea to apply, to become the next mayor of the city of Tiffin. For me, really, it's just me continuing to serve the community that I love. And that's why I chose to pursue that. Again, after many conversations in the last meeting, I discussed a little bit of my past work history. As a 29-year-old person in this community, I've been very fortunate to have a lot of opportunities to grow professionally and personally. Every decision I've made since I graduated, even before I graduated from Heidelberg University with my undergraduate degree, every decision I made moving forward was a strategic decision that allowed me to grow personally, professionally, to grow skill sets that allowed me to incorporate them into my next role. For example, at Tiffin University, I used my experience in fundraising and I've applied that at the chamber. There's a reason the chamber's in the best financial situation it's been in, in, I think, since its existence, because I was able to take a lot of those principles and practices. One thing I mentioned, my role at Tiffin University, I did obtain my Masters of Business while I was a student there at no cost, being an employee, which to me was a huge asset for my future growth. As mentioned in the last meeting, this thing called COVID hit, where I went from being, I consider a road warrior, being on the road, being with alums every single day, to then back in the office. My job changed dramatically. I can tell you my role at Tiffin University, I didn't see myself going there, but because of some situations, I ended up at Tiffin University. I'm very fortunate that I did because I learned so much. So for me, look at my last eight years, being as a member earlier at Council Chambers, I've always had a passion for this community and always had a passion for public service. You know, I attended these meetings really with no, no end in mind. I can tell you, sitting here as a senior at Heidelberg University, I didn't attend to run for mayor eight years later, but I can tell you helped make, give me information to help me make decisions at my jobs and also prepared me for this opportunity if it were to come. So I will say, no, it wouldn't be a year and a half stint and then I'd be gone. I've already, you know, declared my intent to run for this position in the primary of next year because I do have a strong interest in this community and giving back to the community I love. So that's really my response in regards to that.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Leopard?
Thank you, Mr. President. Following several others, they've kind of depleted my questions as well. I will ask the same question to all, all of our candidates. And we'll start with Mr. Cole and work towards Dawn. The next question, we'll start with Dawn and work the other direction. As, as the mayor of Tiffin, what are your goals for the city?
One of my goals for the city would be to increase the housing inventory. I think that goes hand in hand with my second goal would be to bring in some more industry that's going to involve hiring larger numbers of people. I think one of the things that you always have to look at is your age demographics in the city. And if we're not careful, we look, don't look 20 years down the line, do we have a lot of people retiring and leaving town? You know, and that's going to affect, you know, your, your tax base and all that. So those two things kind of go hand in hand. But I would, I would say, having moved here and knowing what the housing inventory is like, I can tell you it was, it was very, it was very difficult finding a house and being able to put in an offer on a house and getting one. And, you know, that, that goes hand with bringing the industry in. You know, if there's no place for them to bring in their employees and for them to live, they're not gonna, they're not gonna bring their, their companies here. So I think it goes hand in hand. But those would be the two things, would be housing inventory and some, some larger industry.
Thank you.
My long-term goal is for this community to continue to thrive. My short-term goals, there's three of them. So obviously, first is the administrative goals. On the next year and a half, priorities would be to get a, get a budget that's balanced, obviously, which makes sense, but that continues to control our costs as we look at inflation and other factors moving to the future. Also with the union negotiations, there's three outstanding. So be working with City Administrator Dale Thornton, Brad Howard, and outside attorneys on that, on those union negotiations, so they're handled in a proper manner. Second would be infrastructure. So we've talked about the long-term control plan. As we know, Phase One of the MS consultant's plan is complete. And so it allows us to get a better understanding of what our numbers look like for the long-term in terms of costs. And so how are we gonna have those discussions now? And we talked a little bit about the EPA in the last meeting. And so let's, let's figure out a plan for the future. And so that, you know, in 2040, we're not paying off this enormous amount of debt on these projects. In the short term, it was discussed in the last council meeting, it was the Ella Street Bridge project, and that's a huge project, right? So Matt Watson, City Engineer Matt Watson, you know, spoke about how we're able to keep that project on, on task and we're able to, you know, have no long-term debt, which is really exciting to hear for our community. One thing that's really important is that there's gonna be some major disruptions to Tiffin City Schools, to our community. So it's, you know, again, having that, those skills to be a communicator, it's working hand in hand with Tiffin City Schools, the residents, visitors, determine a plan to communicate, this is the timeline for the different closures and delays that are gonna happen along the way. And then third, which to was touched on, was housing. And so for me, a mayor's housing committee was formed, I think, recently. And again, that'd be working with, hand in hand with Aaron Motts and the Tiffin Economic Economic Partnership team to look a little more at that. We know that a study was completed in 2019. In regards to housing study, I think it said what we all know, clearly is a housing shortage. So how are we gonna take that, that data and use it to our advantage to help attract builders and other shore community? We have a few builders that are currently building and those homes are already sold before they're even built. And so as many studies have multiple phases, Phase One was completed with, in back in 2019. I think additional phases will be needed to help us really have a plan in place. And then looking at things like annexation and those things with the different agreements with the different townships around us, which I think is a true asset to have in our community, that we can work hand in hand with them. So both the townships can flourish as well as the city. So my three points are administrative. And then the second is infrastructure. And then the third is housing.
Thank you.
I think the, the proper procedure would be to come in and look at the, there are six sections. So you're looking at public safety, infrastructure, you're looking at economic development, being an active, active community, meaning that we have ongoing events, we have things for people to do here, keeps people engaged. Those are all main functions of what we're seeking as a community and we do very, very well now. So I don't think you're looking to change those things. We're trying to continue the momentum forward. You want to come in, you want to make sure that the three entities here at the city are all working cohesively. So you have city council, you have the mayor's office, and you have the administration and department heads. So you want to make sure that's all cohesive, everyone's on the same plan. So as you're meeting with department heads, we're, we're communicating goals and long-term plans together. From there, I think you go with the next triangle, which is gonna be the city of Tiffin, the commissioners, and TCEP. And it's the same goals there, cohesive plans, common goals, and we're all working towards those goals. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I look at it as trying to keep Tiffin as a destination for, to work, to live, to visit. We need all the people we have, we can get to come in here and visit us, help our economy. I don't know that I necessarily agree with bringing in a large industry. We have several companies now that can't get employees and they're scrambling, trying to get employees. And so I think housing is probably crucial to being able to get employees here. If there's no place for them to live, we're not gonna get more employees. And so I think that's very important. And I also think that it's important for, we've got great personnel at TCEP, we have a great person at the chamber, and I'd like to keep working the three of us together to keep moving forward. And I think we've already got that in place. And so just striving to keep Tiffin moving forward.
Thank you. Stay right where you're at, Dawn.
About that, after I moved. Yes, sir.
How will your past employments be beneficial in contract negotiations?
As far as my actual business or business experience? As far as my actual business or business ex- or experience with the school board?
Either way.
Business contracts, as far as from my business, you know, because with, at that end of it, it was blueprints and that kind of thing and understanding how to read them and work with them. And so I would be fine with that with the city engineer. As far as school board and contracts, there's a lot of things you need to watch on signing contracts, the nitty gritties, things that don't set a precedent. And that's, that's a big thing to me, is not setting a precedent on things. And so I tend to watch that kind of stuff when, when we're writing contracts and looking at contracts. And so my experience would be with that.
Thank you.
I think you need to start talking about transparency, honesty, relationship building with those labor unions. So when you're talking to them, it's gotta be a real conversation. It can't be scripted conversations. And I think what I've done my entire life is those exact conversations. They're very real conversations of myself just being honest with them, them being honest with us. So that's really the basis of that. As long as you can build some relationship and some trust, I think finding common ground will be much easier. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So to me, it all comes down to soft skills. Again, we talked about if your heart's in the right place, it goes a long way. Being a communicator is important. I think a lot of folks don't understand, there's a lot of the process with labor, labor union negotiations. It's really a partnership and with, you know, City Administrator Dale Thornton, which is a true asset to this administration, as well as the attorneys that are hired from outside firm. I talked to at the time when Rich Vogt was the city administrator, he talked about the times when he used to have to do all these union negotiations, you know, he used to have their own council. And it was a different discussion. And I think a lot of it is that those, there's a reason those folks are professionals. And so it's really listening, both to, you know, the unions here locally, to it's listening to the union attorneys and lawyers who specialize this, listening to City Administrator Dale Thornton and the team and determining what the best, you know, path forward is. We're pretty fortunate that one of the labor unions is complete, which I think it helps set the tone for the remaining three that are on the table. So for me, honestly, it's leveraging the team, both external and internal team, and also listening to the folks in front of you. It's important that, you know, they get compensated fairly because it's one of those things, we wanna be a competitive community where, you know, firefighters, police officers, police officers wanna work and we wanna be fair. And I think for me, it's being fair, it's listening and it's using the resources that are in front of us to make the decisions. Thank you.
Well, my current job now, I work with contracts and plans and things on a daily basis. But I agree with, when it goes into negotiating, it has to be something that is, you have to be true, you have to be transparent. It has to come from you. It can't, it's, you have to build that relationship. And like I said, in my job now, that is it with contracts, it's building relationships. You know, when you're, when you're asking people to put out the money that we've been asking people to put out, it, it comes down to how they feel about you personally. And it really is a thing with, with contracts, working is, is being transparent and getting them to understand that you're, you're working for them as well as, you know, what your, what your job title is. So I think my job right now, it sets me up perfect for working with contracts. Like I said, I do it every day, working with planning, blueprints, all that kind of stuff. I, I do that on a daily basis. So I think my job sets me up very well for, for your, what your question asked is, can I deal with contracts and things like that? Yes, it's a, it's a daily occurrence for me.
Thank you. My next question is gonna be a, a one-word response from the candidates. It's either gonna be a yes or a no. Two colleges, two universities are on, are on the square fighting. Terrible fistfight going on. Police chief can't break it up, sheriff's department came to help, can't break it up, fight continues. Would you call the fire department out to hose them down?
Yes.
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 That situation actually happened quite a few years ago. It happened on a very cold winter day. And the fire chief told the mayor he would not do that. And the reason the fire chief would not send a fire truck out is because the fire truck is loaded with weapons. It's just some good information there. This kind of goes back to someone else's question, but in one word, name what best describes you. We'll start with Bryce.
Passionate. Dynamic.
Dawn?
Integrity.
They took all the good words.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Leopard. Councilmember Perkins, would you like to? Very good. So that will leave me in the order. Now, the first question I would love to ask, and let's go from right to left. So we'll start with you, Mr. Cole. All of you have a, a sports background, an athletics background. And as many of you know, I'm very passionate about that. Well, we'll get to you, Dawn, don't you worry. Exactly. A passion for athletics, a passion for team sports. Could you just share, and I know that this could be a loaded question, you guys could be up here for hours on this, but could you just briefly share some of the lessons you took away from your time in extracurricular athletics?
Teamwork is one of the biggest ones. And, you know, it's, it's strange to hear that coming from a cross-country runner because back in the day, you know, everybody now says it's an individual sport. It's not an individual sport. It's as much a team sport as anything else. But is teamwork as far as, you know, helping younger athletes out, helping them get to where they wanna be? Hard work, dedication are all things that go in to get you to the level where you wanna be. And that's, you know, those, for me, it was to be at a very high level. So there was a lot of hard work, a lot of dedication that went into it. But I've played individual sports that were individual sports. I played team sports and basketball in high school. So I've been able to take away that, that teamwork, that team effort, the leadership and hard work and dedication.
If I may ask a follow-up, out of those, which was your favorite? What, what was the, what was the sport you just loved to go to and why?
When I was younger in high school, junior and senior year, I loved basketball. Not very many colleges want a six-foot, 120-pound shooting guard. So needless to say, I didn't get a whole lot of responses from colleges on that. So running became a, became a second, very second passion of mine. And as I progressed in that sport, I, I really took on a passion for track and cross-country.
Outstanding. Thank you, sir. Mr. Riggs? Number 68, Bryce Riggs?
You know, I echo the same things with the teamwork and leadership, those kind of things. You know, when I played above high school and collegiate athletics, I'm not gonna lie, I wasn't the star stud quarterback. I was a center that no one really cared about, but the only things they cared about is the ball got snapped, which I had to do. And then two, throughout high school, I actually led the cadence. So that was a big thing for me, is that, you know, most systems, a quarterback calls it. But for me, I think the biggest thing I take away from both my high school and collegiate athletic experiences, the ability to think on your feet. As a center, I called the coverage. And so when that blitzing linebacker was creeping up to the line of scrimmage for me, we had to shift. And there was one person who had to call that coverage and that was myself. And so it's ability to see what's in front of you. And I think it's important in this role, as things come their way, as the mayor, just see what's in front of you and determine what game plan you have to, you know, change to to make it happen. And so there's one thing that we know through COVID and all these other things we've experienced in the last three years is to get a shift and figure it out. So for me, I would say the ability to think on my feet as a center was extremely important for our offensive line and both our quarterback who got protected.
No, very well stated. I mean, you know, I, I was watching you do that and it's, it's awful hard to, to snap a ball while somebody outweighs you by 20 pounds is trying to cave your head in. And did you, could you tell me about your time at Heidelberg? There, there is a point to this, I swear, but your, your time at Heidelberg Athletics, because I know you wound up walking away, and so did I, because it's really hard, even at the D3 level.
My junior year at Heidelberg University, I just suffered a leg injury, injury. Came back and had the, it was nice knee braces on, but I had an opportunity, I actually was an intern for, was, you know, Bill Reinecke, then became Representative Reinecke. And he was running in the general election. And we had conversations and I said, hey, like, look, it's either football or career for me. And at the time, actually, my brother was graduating from Heidelberg University. I ran into Bill on the, on the path and he said, hey, what are you doing tomorrow? And I said, hey, I don't know, what are you doing? And he goes, wanna come work for me? Little did I know that meant detailing cars at the Reinecke Collision Shop, which is, I was like, oh, you know, politics, which I was super excited about. So going into my junior year at Heidelberg, an opportunity to go left or go right. So I was actually fortunate enough to be hired by the Ohio House Republican Organizational Committee, where I then invested myself full-time into my career path. And at that point, again, we talked about age, it's why I made the decision. I either go start the directory now or continue in athletics. And I chose to start my career at that point, my junior year of college.
Very good. And it's also weird when suddenly you're three inches shorter than a lot of guys that you're competing against, so.
Very much so. My brother, he'll love me for this, he was actually the star athlete. I was not. So he was a starter and I got to watch him and cheer him on as a cheerleader. And at a certain point, I got reminded every day how much more of an athlete he was than I was. So I think I said, all right, I'll walk away and be happy and cheer you on from the, from the bench. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Perkins? I am because, yeah, I, I really am.
So before I get into any words or what I learned, the history goes, played every year in Lincoln School with Ben and soccer. We did that for five years. Moved on from there, did like E-League and D-League baseball here in town. It was, it was either like strikeout or homerun, I was that guy. I didn't do anything else, nothing. I think I closed my eyes when I batted, you know? After that, then I got into football, of course, because it's Tiffin. And played football all the way up to the beginning of junior season. I was actually a really good kicker, like really good. Thought I was gonna go places with it and then I tore my quad 80% before the junior year started. So as a joke and a bet and all this thing, they're like, you should be a cheerleader. So I did. And that was in 1999. And as Ben knows, there's been one, I believe, ever since. I took a lot of punishment for that, a lot of ridicule, you know? And that's when I learned a lot of things, though, about myself. I learned resilience like no other. I've got some very thick skin from those years. I had some of my friends, some of my best friends, you know, they would make fun of you right to your face. So it was tough, but it was good. I mean, everything everybody else gets with leadership and team leadership and communication and camaraderie. And I mean, there's a million things you got, sports that are just fantastic. You don't even know what's happening, but you look back later in life and it's pretty amazing. So I, I would say communication's huge. I really learned how to communicate with other people at a younger age by being in sports. And, you know, I come back to resilience. It, it toughens you up a lot, it really does. Not just in football, but, you know, doing other things that, you know, go against the grain. So, thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Yana Toono. And I know you were looking puzzled when I-
My athletic prowess, I know.
Well, when I talked about cheerleading, you know, I, I think about that. I think about our state champion Colombian cheerleaders. And they're able to do things that look like they're straight out of the Matrix in unison with 15 other people.
Very hard work.
So it, it, it is very much athletics. So I would just love to hear the, the lessons that you took away from your time with the Senecas. Am I correct or tornadoes?
Tornadoes. However, I do have a Seneca story.
Okay.
How many of you remember the championship game in 81 for Calvert? I was sitting there, pregnant with my son, in the freezing cold weather. And so when you hear me talk about Tiffin City Schools all the time, I also supported Calvert Senecas. Sat there through the whole game. I am one of these people that will not leave a game regardless of if you're winning or losing. I will stay for the whole game. We stayed for the whole game. I froze my butt off. My dad hung out in the bathroom, we're like, what happened to my dad? He was in the bathroom staying warm. I stayed for the whole game, frozen. Meanwhile, at Tiffin City Schools, I always attended the football games, win or losing. I always stayed, I always cheered. And to me, it should be a morale booster. And I'll get teased when I was up in the stands because a friend of mine said, don't get in her way, she's a band geek wannabe. I played the violin. I really wish I'd have played a wind instrument because I really wanted to be in the band. And so big supporter of the, the marching band, the football teams, always loved going to the football games. And so I may not have been there athletically, but I was always there supporting them.
Thank you. And Dawn, if you would just go ahead and stand up there, yes?
We're going back and forth, okay?
Now, I, I have this conversation very regularly with constituents and this will be for everybody. And in fact, it's not constituents, but it's, it's friends and neighbors, it's community members. You know, folks out on Tecumseh Trail, you know, the Jamestown addition, Deer Ridge. They will often, or some, I should say, some will often be a bit upset, you know, when we try for the road and bridge levy for additional income tax. There are complaints about the additional fee that is added on to city sewer users that are outside of the city limits. How would you, how would all of you answer that question when brought up? Because you will be accused of taxation without representation. How do you answer that and is there a better way in the future?
Why do I get the tough ones before anybody else goes before me? Well, in, in the case of them annexing, you know, for services in, in some ways, I think we're a bargain compared to what they're dealing with. Do they really wanna put those full septic systems in and things like that? At least with, with coming into us and doing it that way, it should be more reasonable for them. And so that would be my explanation on that, because why else would they be wanting to do it anyhow? But the other systems are extremely expensive. I don't see where they would be better off using them.
Very well stated. How about, how about the, the income tax, like the additional income tax, say the road and bridge levy for someone who works in the city? How do you get, and I, and I know part of it's just the nature of government, but how do you solve that question?
I, I think the road and bridge levy is awesome. My response to that always is, who gets to build a bridge without taking out a loan? That thing will be paid for when we do it. We do not have to have a loan for it. And so right there pays for itself. And it is only, what does it work out to be, a dollar for every hundred dollars you make is what it costs somebody. And so if you're not being charged additional money or having a loan to pay for, how can you beat that? It's paid for. And so to me, that's why I can always support that levy because I know it does good things. And with our city engineer, with the plan he has for the streets, I know people keep complaining, there's, you know, potholes and things like that, but we're getting there. And we're getting there in a five-year plan to keep doing all streets. And so we're getting there and it's a great, great levy. It's a good, it was a good deal and I'm glad we renewed it.
Mr. Perkins?
Thank you. I, it's all about creating value. So you have to create, create value in the things that we're supplying the folks. And Dawn touched on that a little bit with, you know, the cost of maybe a septic system or whatever else they may need in replace of those things. So I think, I think you hear them out and see what their real concerns are, because maybe it's not even that. There's a lot of times I'll get off the phone with somebody and what they called to yell at me about is not even what we're end up talking about. So we'd have to go from there. But, you know, road and bridge levies, things like that, those are the things people are always using every day, whether you live in town or not. But you, you're still gonna be using the roads, you're still gonna be using the bridges and the sewer system and whatnot. So I mean, it's all infrastructure that I think we are using wisely. So you, you can't be upset with us wasting any funds. Everything is going to very good use and we can go back and track every single dollar of that road and bridge levy. So, thank you.
Mr. Riggs?
So let's be honest with ourselves. No one likes to pay more than what they think they need to- to pay. I think from the road and bridge levy standpoint, obviously, as you know, I was a champion for that levy the last two times through. They both got approved by the voters. For me, it's a use tax, right? I mean, these folks are paying income tax because they live, I mean, they, they work in our community, they travel the roads. And so again, no one likes to pay gasoline tax, no one likes to pay these things, but those things are just, to me, use tax. And, you know, again, no one likes to pay these things. It's a lot, for me, a lot of it's understanding what their concerns are. If they're using our infrastructure, I think they should really, you know, support it and allow us to continue to invest in it. Probably unpopular opinion, but for me, it's reality where, you know, it's nice to have those, again, Ellis Street Bridge, no long-term debt, because the cities are using these dollars wisely. Often, our tax dollars are put into a fund that we never get to see. So for me, I said, the road and bridge levy is exactly what taxation should look like. When you look at taxation, it's taking these dollars, allocating to a certain purpose. And you can see every year, City Engineer Matt Watson talks about these dollars. In the last council meeting, he was discussing, okay, well, unfortunately, because of, you know, inflation, our Ellis Street Bridge project went up. So instead, we have to instead doing these alternate road repairs, we're pushing a few year, few back. What community tells the residents in our community what that plan is? So the planning place is important. And I would say the same with a sewer, use tax. And it's one of those things, I think, you know, using the city's infrastructure, that you should support our community and, you know, and those services that are, you know, needed to maintain for the long term as well.
Thank you.
I think Councilman Perkins, you said it the best. First thing I would do when they approached me with that question is I'm just gonna stand back and listen to them, let them vent. A lot of times, if you let them vent, that's all they wanted to do. And after they get done venting, they don't even remember what they're, what they were venting about. But that would be my first thing. Let them talk, hear what their concerns are. And then it's all a matter of being transparent and letting them understand. It is like, like Bryce said, it's, they're use taxes. You know, you're, are you driving on the roads in Tiffin? Yes. Then you should help maintain the roads in Tiffin. Are you using the sewer and water in Tiffin? Yes. Then you should help maintain those. Is, I got lucky, I got to go last, Dawn. As Dawn would say, it's expensive to dig a well. It's expensive to put in a septic system. You're probably paying less being on the city systems than you are having to go out and do all that yourselves. And then, you know, when things break, if you, if you're using your own septic system and your septic field goes bad, guess who's funding, fitting the bill for that? You're fitting, you're, you're footing all of it. Where at least with the using city, you have everybody in the city that's, that's helping fund that. So your costs are a lot less, but it is, it's, it's a use, it's a use tax is basically what it is. And like I said, biggest thing, though, is letting them vent, letting them get it off their chest. And, you know, probably after the first five minutes, they're gonna, like I said, they're gonna forget totally what they were venting about. And as people say, you know, let it, let it go for five minutes and they'll find something else to, to want to vent about. So it's just letting people, letting people vent and, and being transparent and letting them understand where that money is, what that money's going towards.
Thank you. I have two additional questions. I think I'd like to start with Bryce for this first one and then Zach for the next one. I will start with you. Bryce, part of me hesitates to bring this up. And it has quite literally nothing to do with you, but it was one of the hardest conversations I ever had to have as a teacher. A parent messaged me and, and thanked me for being at the Black Lives Matter protest, because her daughter, who I didn't even have, who was a person of mixed race, she knew then if something went bad at the school, she had somewhere to go. And I think of those that maybe don't fit the traditional mold of, of Tiffin, you know, those of, of a different color or a different ethnicity or a different religion, or those who, who are in the LGBTQIA community. What can be done to make Tiffin a more inclusive place?
So I think, one, it honestly starts with education. So I was fortunate, again, talking about my past experiences and how they've allowed me to see through, see things through different lenses. I worked at Tiffin University, where they celebrate cultural uniqueness every single day. And for me, it's not just celebrating it, it's being educated in. So when I was a, when I was employed at Tiffin University, I not only went through the beginning stages of cultural uniqueness, I actually paid on my own, on my own dollars to go to cultural training, because I think it's very important to be able to represent this community well. You have to understand people's mindsets, you have to understand their backgrounds, you have to understand where they're from, to help understand where they're coming from. And I think for us to, you know, I think from the leadership perspective, training's important and we have resources here in our community. I know Heidelberg University, just in the last couple of years, went through some training as well. If we talk about the assets of having two universities in our, in our university, in our community, it's really starting with them. And they have folks that they've hired, Tiffin University actually has a center that they just established officially within the last couple of years, where there's resources there. So how do you bring those folks into the, you know, into City Hall and have those conversations with our police department, with our fire department? And really, I think it starts there. Education's extremely important. And then recognizing it. We talked about, you know, the, the different rallies they've had recently in front of the Justice Center. It's extremely important to, you know, support those individuals because, I mean, we all have an opinion, we all have a right to express those opinions. So for me, you know, the Juneteenth event, you know, whether there be an event at the Justice Center, it's, you know, understanding their perspective and how it helps, you know, how, how they make their decisions based off of that. I think it's important to listen. We talked about, you know, that one of the biggest things is to sit back and understand where they're coming from. And I think it helps makes, you know, make the decisions for the city and for the residents, if you can understand where they're coming from and what perspective they bring to this community. We're very diverse. We continue to get more diverse as we bring in more university students in. Other folks are moving back to our community. They have all these different unique, you know, experiences, attributes. And I think it's important that we celebrate those. And we really, you know, engage those folks to have, bring all those thoughts together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Perkins, if you wouldn't mind?
I think the key to that entire subject is empathy. It's something I didn't have when I was younger as much. As I've grown older, I understand to, you know, look at things through someone else's eyes. That's a huge, huge thing to learn about when you get older, especially, you know, once you have children. They see things totally different. And you know that from being a school teacher. You know, the kid sees things very innocent ways that we used to see them, but we don't anymore. So empathy is huge. And I think the whole R and D thing goes away when you become a mayor. It's not about Republican, Democrat, just like we all know that sit in this room. Most people can tell you who is what in here, because we don't do any policies based upon that. We do what's best for this city all the time. So bipartisan is huge and empathy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Yana Toono?
I think it's all about conversations and experience. Years ago, which isn't quite what you're asking about, but it's similar. We have quite a few Japanese factories in town. And these poor children were coming into our school system not knowing the English language. And I attended quite a bit of training over in Finley, because friends of Finley had that for those students and, you know, options and things to do and to make it easier for them. So it's kind of the same thing. And so it's, it's, it's conversations with people, seeing where they're coming from, what can you do to help them? And just listening and trying to help them and make it better. I was filling out a medical form yesterday online and it asked me some really personal questions that I was really kind of taken aback by asking me, you know, what my sexual orientation, all this other stuff. And I'm like, really? We've come to this that they're asking me this? And I almost didn't answer it just because I was kind of insulted that they're asking it. It shouldn't be anybody's business. We should just all get along and, and try to help each other and stop judging people also. And so I would just like to have conversations with them and see what we can do to help and make, make life easier for them. They've, they've got enough of a struggle without us adding to it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. Cole?
I have 26 years of dealing with this coaching track. If you've been around track, it's probably the most diverse sport out there. And what I found over the years in these situations, it comes down to communication. It comes down to teaching and, and learning what makes the other person tick and why they're, you know, why they feel that way and things like that. It's being open and honest with them on feelings. And, you know, like I said, it's, really comes down to, we just, we need to get back in this country and even in town a little bit. And I don't see it as badly in Tiffin as I've seen it in other cities I've been in. But getting back to just caring about each other's people. If you read the Bill of Rights and the Constitution and Declaration of Independence, we're all created equal. Let's just get back to caring about each other as, as human beings and not putting a label on people, be it Democrat, Republican, or whatever. You know, it's just about getting back to caring about people.
Thank you. Yeah, my final question, we'll start with Mr. Perkins, Councilmember Perkins. Then I believe we'll go to Dawn and then Mr. Cole and then Mr. Riggs will close with you. 2017 was when I was fortunate enough to be approached, to be asked to be on council. And, you know, I, the timing really was not great, as most likely it isn't for the four of you. It's just one of those things where an opportunity came up. But the reason why I jumped had to do with the amount of talent available in the community. We have TU and Heidelberg, and that's to say nothing of the Hare Academy, Sentinel Career Center, are associated with Vanguard. And then we have Calvert Catholic Schools and Tiffin City Schools. That's pretty hard to beat. What can we do or what do you suppose is the best way forward for keeping some of that talent here? There's gonna be kids that are gonna need to spread their wings and they're gonna need to fly away. You know, Coach Cole, you were one of them. And how do we get them to come back? Or how do we get them to establish roots here?
Right. Well, I think the job market by itself is just going more technical. So I think that, that's the first step forward. It can't always be the next manufacturing facility. We have to upgrade into businesses that are more computer savvy and technological. It's simple as that. And a lot of the fields are going that way. I know that there is some regression going on and people are going back to skilled trades because they're much needed. And, you know, there's a need for all of that, of course, which goes to Tara and Sentinel and all those kinds of things. So I think keeping it diverse is huge. We have to have many different job markets going on. But are we ever going to keep everybody? No. We're just not a big enough city. But if we can keep them somewhat local, it's huge, you know? So as, as long as we're doing our due diligence to try to keep the right businesses here that are helping mentor and groom any, any graduates that maybe want to stay here or even stay here temporarily and move on for the experience, I'm okay with. So it, it's a diversity issue and it always will be. We'll always be fighting that mold for that. So I guess we'll see what we can do in the future.
Thank you. One additional follow-up question that I would like each of the candidates to answer. And if you'll excuse me, I lost my words for just a moment. Let's say we have, and this is just me spitballing here. Let's see, we have, we have kids that are, are just, and we do, class of 2022. I can tell you guys that right now. You know, we have kids that are destined for the big time that have come out of this community. And chances are, they're not going to come back, other than for Christmas and Easter and, and for things of that nature. How do we convince them then to remain? Or what, what role does the mayor play in convincing them to keep their support local and, you know, frankly, bring their capital back to the city?
Well, I think that's a huge thing, because you always hear that it's like the black hole at Tiffin when you move away, you know, because I've moved away and it definitely sucks you back in when you get a little bit older. In your twenties, it's not as fun. It's just not. You have children, you age a little bit and you realize that it's a very safe community and it's very affordable. And those are huge. And if we can keep those two things going, along with, you know, we have a great downtown, we have lots of local businesses and things like that. So it gives it a very family oriented feel. I think a lot of people are really drawn to that. You know, there's not a lot of cities I would go to and I would just leave my door unlocked, you know? And you still feel like you can do that in Tiffin. You know, I know my parents used to do it when I was a kid, but as you grow older, those kinds of things stop. And, you know, I will still leave my house and run somewhere real quick and leave the door open. So it, it's something that, it's a family oriented town. So I think that's the draw. They can come back, they can live more affordable and, you know, they can live on, on maybe a street where the kids are playing with other children and it's not dangerous and scary. And, you know, it's people that they knew from their past. So hopefully we can keep that going, because that's the great thing about Tiffin that a lot of cities don't offer.
Very well stated. Additional follow-up, Councilmember Perkins. My apologies.
All day. Let's go.
Yeah. And you threw me off, you old, you old rascal. We'll go ahead and move on. We'll go ahead and move on. I believe, Mr. Cole, if you don't mind?
All right. Trying to remember your first questions here.
Yeah, me too.
You know, I think having Tiffin University and Heidelberg University in town are two great assets. The, this, and Sentinel and the other ones as well. You know, that they're, they're assets in the sense that, you're right, Councilman Perkins, industry's changing. You know, it's not the old automotive industry of Tiffin, you know, Hayes Albion National Machinery out there, foundries pumping out car parts. So we have these two universities. So how do we, how do we keep, try to keep people here? Go and kind of start looking to the future of what businesses we want to bring in, train those, put majors together, train those people in a way that those businesses coming in don't feel like they need to bring a lot of people in, that there's already people that are qualified here. You know, same with Sentinel. You know, there's, there's, I can tell you in the trade labor, I, I work with it hand in hand daily. There are needs out there for that. And we, we kind of got back in the eighties and nineties pumping our, our children full the idea, everybody has to go to college. Not everybody has to go to college. Not everybody's fit for college. And they made up that you may be the smartest person in the world, but maybe college and sitting in a classroom isn't where you need to be. Maybe your mind is more mechanical and technical and maybe, you know, being a mechanic, being a plumber, doing those type of things. Our electrician are more apt to what your skill levels are, what you want. So I think, you know, using those assets that we have to develop people that would make industry come here, because the workforce is already here, I think are, are two of the biggest things we could do as, as a town. And how to keep people here? You know, I'm gonna go back to what my dad told all three of my, both me and my two sisters. You know what? It's not bad to go out and see what else is out there. And he would always kind of chuckle after he'd say that, because he always knew one of us was gonna end up back here. And I don't think he was more proud of the day that my wife and I called him and said, hey, we're moving back to Tiffin. And I get kind of emotional because my dad just passed away. But it was, it meant a lot to him. And, and we did. I did go out and experienced a lot of different things. I experienced Charlotte. I experienced Eight Ohio. And if you've been to Eight Ohio, you, if you can live in Eighty, you can live anywhere. But no, it's, it's, it's totally different. But we got to see a lot of different things. And, you know, it was, it's kind of good to go out and see what else is out there, you know? And it helps you become back and understand really how great a place Tiffin is. And, you know, I'll use my wife, for example, she grew up in Buffalo area. And when she said, man, let's move back to Tiffin, I was all for it. I was like, put the house in the market, call the realtor, let's go. You know, let's start looking for houses. Because I knew how great a city it was. And, and it is, it is a place where, you know, you feel like, man, if I'm just running down the store, I can leave the door unlocked. I can, you know, leave the garage door open and, you know, those type of things. And, you know, it's just, it's a great city. It's a great place. But I don't know if it's necessarily, we have to try to keep people trapped here. Let them go out and see what else is out there. Let them, let them see. And they're gonna find out that Tiffin is a great place.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. I believe, Mr. Riggs, if you would mind?
You know, I think the biggest thing for me is opportunity. So clearly look at me as somebody who stuck around Tiffin. And I said, I stuck around Tiffin when it wasn't cool. All right. And I went to Heidelberg for undergrad, went to for my masters and I stuck around. But I think the biggest thing is, you have to find opportunity and then connect those folks with the opportunities that exist here. I look out into council, I see, you know, Mayor Boyle, I see Wilkins, Councilperson Wilkins, and I said, these are folks that came here for their education, Tiffin University, and find an opportunity, whether it be in the athletics department, whether there be another organization, you found a fit, right? And that job helped you stay here. And then from there, you're able to, you know, to grow in your career path. And you find other opportunities here in our community, or, as I say, in the suburbs of our community, but you still live here. And I think that's extremely important. So for me, it's one finding opportunities, whether it be, you know, North Central Education, Educational Service Center, whether it be Tiffin Columbian, whether it be Calvert, whether it be Sentinel, Vanguard Sentinel, it's finding opportunities for the folks here locally. So I've served on the manufacturing showcase, I've served on the manufacturing bus tours. I understand how important it is to educate our youth about, you know, manufacturing our community. A lot of our jobs are there. We also have healthcare. We also have, you know, you name it, right? With sales, we have healthcare, all these different things. So it's finding what opportunities do we have locally? And how do And how do you invest in the Tiffin-Seneca Economic Partnership to ensure that they're working with, you know, the Carol Owens of Ohio Means Jobs, to, you know, investing into our students to find those opportunities to connect them? And if they can find find housing here, one, and they can find a job here, I think they can be successful here. And I think we're, a lot of us are proof of it, that we found our opportunity. So for me, that's extremely important. A lot of my colleagues that I went to school with, Heidelberg University, they moved away. But actually, I've been surprised, number of folks who have moved back and then that come back to our community. And I think as we continue to grow, it's important to sell that experience, the quality of life. You mean, if you can't find an opportunity, that kind of ruins the quality of life piece. But if you go to community, look at Donna, who graduated from Heidelberg University, came back for alumni weekend and said, wow, this is exciting, this is exciting. I see all the great things here, I want to start my own business here. Take my business in Michigan, bring it to Tiffin. So it's again, telling our story, and then I think telling the story of folks who've moved back. And that's investing again in the Economic Development Corporation to tell those stories that folks say like, look, there's opportunity here, so I moved back, so I stayed here, and they made a livable wage, they found great housing, and they really have a good success story.
Thank you. And I wanted to thank you also for bringing up, you can sit. I wanted to thank you, I forgot about the, you know, we also have the E S C here with the academy and and bridges. So we have a lot of different entities doing a lot of different great things for our kids. Thank you for reminding me. Councilmember Yana Toono.
I've discovered it is tougher going last. Because they said all these things I was already set to say. Trying to keep people here. It's an interesting concept because it's a circle of life. And some kids just want to spread their wings, and they're going to go spread their wings. And as Bryce just said, we've got two people sitting up here now that weren't from here, and they're here and they stayed because they love it. And so we've got Heidelberg and T U bringing people in for us and keeping them. And so we've got that also. Now, as far as doing things, we're probably going to have to go more hub or technology to keep, because of COVID, everybody got used to working at home. And so we may be keeping some that like to work from home. And so that's another thing that could possibly happen. But I don't know that I really worried too much about keeping people here because a lot of, so many of my classmates have actually moved back, and I found that interesting. We just had a class reunion, and so many have come back. And they always have fond memories of Tiffin. The ones that aren't from here anymore are just amazed at how Tiffin has changed since we were younger. And that's all good. And so it's decisions kids will need to make, and sometimes they'll leave and sometimes they come back. But can't really control that, it's what they want to do. But we give them a nice starting point that they might want to come back to.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm going to take a page, as I often have in my time on city council, by copying Councilmember Leopard. One additional bonus question, it's yes, no, nobody has to stand up. I have a statement, and we're starting with you, Mr. Cole. Would you answer yes or no to the following statement? Tiffin can be a college town and a place to raise a family at the same time?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Hundred percent yes.
Councilmember Yana Toono.
Absolutely.
Wonderful. That concludes all of my questions. Want to thank all of you for for being up here, this is, this is not easy. And
I just had a quick
Mayor Boyle.
Sorry, sorry, just more more of a statement. I asked this last time of, you know, regarding time and, you know, the commitment that it takes to be the mayor in the city. And and, you know, I think all of you had answered very much like, yes, we would be able to adjust our schedules, whether it be with your work, or I think Mr. Riggs and Councilwoman Perkins, you both said you would be leaving your jobs. And Councilwoman Yana Toono, you talked about being retired. But I guess I more just want to reiterate, you know, I've been acting mayor for a little over a week or so. Not that I didn't know it before, but, I mean, the amount of of time as far as you being in the spotlight twenty-four seven, you receiving emails constantly, you receiving requests on social media as far as questions and comments that you need to respond to, the phone calls, the events, it's not a Monday through Friday job, right? It's not an eight to five job or a nine to five job. And I guess I just want to reiterate, you know, that that can mean, you know, giving up time with your family or your loved ones. And so more reiterating the fact of, you know, the commitment that really this is going to take as far as time. So I, you know, again, you know, I hope you guys were all very honest and truthful in your answers and and really mean it just because I I definitely would would expect that. And I think we all would in the next mayor, as well as everybody in Tiffin. So that's really, that's all I had.
Thank you, Mayor Boyle. At this point, I'd love to see how council would like to proceed. Would we like to have discussion amongst ourselves? Would we like to invite back Councilmember Perkins and Councilmember Yana Toono to their seats at this time? Well, let me just say how proud I was to be a part of that. Just seeing how my fellow council members took the time to really consider excellent questions for these four fine folks that are that are vying for this position. So I suppose the question then for my friends and colleagues is what's next? What shall we do? Shall we discuss this further? Are we ready to commence with the vote? Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. As far as leaving the room and conferring among ourselves, discussing this among ourselves.
No, 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 it would be open in here, no.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely, sir.
Part of that, so.
Yeah, no. That would be a terrible idea. Anybody else? Councilmember Yana Toono.
I just want to acknowledge the fact that I realize that it's going to be very difficult for every one of you because we're all friends, we're all acquaintances, and you don't want to hurt anybody's feelings or whatever. But at the end of the day, we need to do what's best for Tiffin now. And but I just want you to know that I do understand that it's really tough for you guys tonight, so.
Well, it's one of those things, you know, I pretty well felt sick about a lot of things we've had to do recently. And I know everybody knows what I'm talking about. But it's just, it's one of those things where it's why we put our names on and ask for people's signatures and ask for people's votes, so. Councilmember Perry.
Thank you. Just wanted to kind of reiterate on or touch on something, you know, Councilman Perkins brought up about, you know, him helping me out with Big Mike's imperia. Obviously, it's not a secret because I plaster his face all over Facebook, you know, when we do videos or anything like that. And if I were an immoral person, I would vote for anybody else but him, just based on my own personal thoughts. But I just want to reiterate that has nothing to do, you know, when I took this seat, I took this, you know, spot on council, take it very serious. I always, always think through all my decisions very carefully, and I always vote from the heart. So I just want to say, you know, just put that out there, same, you know, I love transparency. And I think that people deserve that. So just wanted to kind of say that, you know, to that aspect.
Yeah, something I've been sharing with with community members as that's come up, because it has come up, is sometimes it's hard to see small town occurrences that are natural consequences of of the intertwined lives we lead as a grand conspiracy or a grand plan. And I would say that as as a body, and I don't want to pat ourselves on the back, but I would say as a body, we've done our very best to make sure that this is not something that was done in a smoke filled room, you know, to steal an adage from General Hayes's election. You know, it's done out in public with our friends and neighbors, and I just think that's pretty special. Is there any additional discussion with regards to the process?
Guess I would just have one question.
Sure.
Say a vote goes two, 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 one, or how many we got? Four. So just say two, two, zero, zero. Are we just dropping off one, zero, or both zeros and then revoting with the two and the two? Or whatever, however it works out?
Councilmember Perkins.
You're dropping off the lowest vote, and if there's a tie, it's the lowest two.
Okay, so if there's a tie, both lowest are eliminated.
Correct.
I just, just making sure we know exactly how it works.
At this time, I suppose I would entertain a motion to close discussion on the subject and proceed with the vote, if anybody is so willing.
Do we need to motion that, or?
I think that that would can, would make it clear that the, there's unanimous consent to have no further discussion. So I think it's a motion in order.
Councilmember Perry.
I'll sub move to close discussion.
We have a motion to close discussion and begin the selection process. Is there a second at this time? Councilmember Jones.
I'll second that motion, Mr. President.
We have a motion and a second to close discussion. Is there any discussion on that? At this time, I would actually like to do a voice vote or a roll call vote on that motion. Council Clerk Forrest.
Councilmember Perry.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yana Toono.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
And Perkins.
Yes.
Please let the record show that that motion carried by a vote of seven to zero. So we will now take a vote on who will serve as our next mayor. This will serve as our first ballot. If I may ask, Law Director Howard, would you be so kind as to provide just another update? Or or just another summary of how this this process will look momentarily?
The charter says that you shall elect a person to serve as mayor. You had previously determined that the process, and this was by vote at a prior meeting, the process is that you will each vote out loud, roll call vote, in front of everyone in our community. The, after the first ballot, if someone has received a majority of council members, which would be four, then that person is elected. If a person does not receive four votes, then whoever received the the least number of votes will be dropped off a second ballot. And then you will make a second ballot to determine whether there is a majority of votes for a candidate. So I believe that that's the process that you are entering into. So you will start a first ballot. You will follow in voting procedure the same order from your last regular council meeting, which was the same order that was used by Councilperson or Council Clerk Ann Forrest a minute ago. So that will be the order in which you will ask the candidate or the council members to vote.
And we will be saying the name of our choice.
Yes, that is correct, out loud.
And I would, I would ask council that we, that we keep it to the name at this time and not any explanation on the first ballot. If any, but I am certainly open to, I certainly wouldn't dictate what you can and cannot say at the time of your vote. I will ask Council Clerk Forrest to begin the roll.
Councilmember Perry.
Zach Perkins.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Bryce Riggs.
Councilmember Gillig.
Dawn Yana Toono.
Councilmember Yana Toono.
Dawn Yana Toono.
Councilmember Jones.
Bryce Riggs.
Councilmember Leopard.
Zach Perkins.
Councilmember Perkins.
Zach Perkins.
After the first round of ballots, we stand at three votes for Zach Perkins, two votes for Bryce Riggs, and two votes for Dawn Yana Toono. Mr. Cole, I would just like to absolutely thank you for your part in this process. You don't function thirty some odd years as a Division Two and Division Three college coach without being the real deal. And I'm just so thrilled that you're back in the community. And I would encourage you to to please be active. I can't begin to stress enough how how much you impressed me over over the course of this time. Council.
Well said, yeah, totally. Thank you very much for your time and your interest, and I totally echo everything that President Gillig said, so thank you.
At this time, I think I would like to ask if we, well, no. We will now proceed to our second ballot.
Councilmember Perry.
Zach Perkins.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Bryce Riggs.
Councilmember Gillig.
Dawn Yana Toono.
Councilmember Yana Toono.
Dawn Yana Toono.
Councilmember Jones.
Bryce Riggs.
Councilmember Leopard.
Perkins.
Councilmember Perkins.
Zach Perkins.
So what do we do now?
Okay, so this would be something for Law Director Howard.
Yes, yeah, my my advice is that no one has achieved four votes. You can't remove anyone since no one has gained enough support for a majority vote. So I would suggest that you have discussion and have debate, if you will, and then take further vote after you've completed your discussion.
Very well stated, Mr. Law Director. So for me, I'll just explain why I voted for Councilmember Yana Toono. I have known Councilmember Yana Toono for a number of years professionally. As she mentioned, she was on the school board while I was a teacher. And to be quite frank, I wasn't her biggest fan at that time. And that's just unfortunately, one of those things with management and labor. You know, sometimes it's hard to gain that relationship. But I tell you one thing, I always trusted that she would do what was absolutely best for the kids. And being up here with her, she's our senior member of council. It has been extraordinarily difficult for me, and I'll just come right out and say it, it's been extraordinarily difficult for me to reconcile that the charter change. And I completely understand and I voted for it. But just very personally speaking, it's been tough for me to consider candidates that don't have the mandate of the people. Dawn and Zach have the mandate of the people. Bryce, you know, the the numbers don't quite add up. But, you know, I hope you know, I almost consider you to be like a son, you know, definitely like a brother. And for you, I'm not saying no, I'm saying not yet. And this is me being selfish, and I'm the one that doesn't have to really live with these consequences because of what's coming next for me and my family. I want to see what you and Aaron can do together, I really do. And Zach, same reason for you. You know, we've, you've experienced loss just like me. You struck out on your own, which I'm so proud of you for, after, you know, years of of corporate restaurants. And that's a huge, huge responsibility. You know, you're the, you're the face, the general manager. My sister was in hotel restaurant management. For you, in my mind right now, I'm saying not yet. And, you know, I'm just, I'm very excited to see, I've told people all along, I have no idea how this ends tonight, zero. So I'm excited to hear ideas from my, from my friends and colleagues here. Councilmember Wilkins.
So I'm I'm the newbie to the group. And I think I've shared with people, when people ask me, I don't, I don't know what I don't know, right? I've worked with Bryce for two years at Tiffin University. I worked with him through starting the Seneca County Young Professionals Group. And I know his work ethic, I know he's an honest person. I know he's the first person there, and I know he's the last person to leave typically when you're working with him. And and that's where I stand on him. I know that he works hard and he cares about this this community. He was a student that went to Heidelberg University and could have left, and and he decided to stay, and he chose Tiffin. So I think that shows a lot about his character. And like I said, it's, it's what, I don't know what I don't know. Reading the resumes, I think everybody is a qualified candidate for this position. It's just, I know, I know him, and I know he'll work hard for this the city, so thank you.
And that's the thing, it's so nuanced, you know, it's, you have to consider the the health of the city as a whole. Resumes and experience and answers are outstanding, but how does that work with your, with the living body that is the city of Tiffin government? So excellent points. Councilmember Wilkins. Councilmember Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. For me, I think Bryce Riggs is a rock and an asset to a city. There's a lot of mixing up going on right now, obviously, with now president. Gillig leaving and Vicki just coming on, we have a relatively, you know, I won't say inexperienced council, but young council. And I think, you know, with David Zach off the TSEP job, now we got Mayor Montz filling that job, you know, having some form of stability going forward is huge. And I think for the next year and a half, for the, the health of Tiffin as a whole, I think that is Zach leading us as mayor and seeing Bryce and Aaron Montz kind of help guiding and getting us to when the people can put in who they want. I think, you know, a couple X factors of mine where I feel whoever is mayor should be elected. I know it's not in the charter. That's just my own personal belief, not that I wouldn't vote for, for Bryce if Zach were to be eliminated. But those were my, my reasons. And Dawn, I love your resume. I like how you think things out. I think, I do think this is a good time to, to see how somebody can do before getting into a job. So that was kind of my thought process going into it.
Very well said, Councilmember Perry. Councilmember Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I sought out the, the opinion of a very trusted friend of Tiffin, someone that served not only the city, but he served the county as well. That recommendation was from Rich Vogt. And his opinion, his opinion means an awful lot to me. We've served together on committees. We've served together on council. And I've seen the leadership that Rich has provided for the city and for the county for a great number of years. His recommendation means an awful lot to me. And one thing Rich told me, and I think that needs to be repeated tonight, you gotta go with your gut.
Thank you, Councilmember Leopard. Any additional discussion? Further questions? Very good. I'll ask Councilclerk Forrest to take a roll, please.
Councilmember Perry.
Zach Perkins.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Bryce Riggs.
Councilmember Gillig.
Dawn Yanatuno.
Dawn Yanatuno.
Dawn Yanatuno.
Councilmember Jones.
Bryce Riggs.
Councilmember Leopard.
Perkins.
Councilmember Perkins.
Zach Perkins.
Round two. So how do we move forward from here? And that's, you know, that is a, we get to, we get to do this live, folks. You know, how do we, how do we move forward? Mr. Jones, Councilmember Jones.
I just had a question. I was concentrating, focusing. What were the numbers? Was it three, one, one, three, or?
Three, three, two.
I'm sorry?
Three, two.
Three, two, two.
Three, two, two, excuse me.
Again? Okay, three, two, two. All right.
And tic-tac-toe parlance, we have a cat. Councilmember Jones.
Well, to answer your question, I thank you, Mr. President, to move on, follow the procedure. We had first vote, we had a second vote. I think we need a third ballot and see what happens. And not a fourth ballot, fifth ballot, following the charter, as Director Law Howard says.
Very well stated.
Suggest that.
Very well stated. Do we wish to have any additional discussion? You know, if I could, you know, I would really appreciate Councilmember Perkins, Councilmember Yanatuno, if you could just weigh in. I don't even really know how best to explain it. You know, why, why you, I guess, just with the unique situation that, that you're both, that you're both running. No, I guess we've already done that.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's.
Out of fairness, too.
Yeah. No, that's a good point. Okay, let's move on to our next ballot.
Councilmember Perry.
Zach Perkins.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Bryce Riggs.
Councilmember Gillig.
Dawn Yanatuno.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Dawn Yanatuno.
Councilmember Jones.
Bryce Riggs.
Council, Councilmember Leopard.
Perkins.
Councilmember Perkins.
Zach Perkins.
Okay. Very good. Now, I know if we are unable, Law Director Howard, if I may inquire, if we were unable to reach a consensus, what would, what would happen after that?
Yeah, the charter actually says if council fails to elect a mayor within thirty days, and so that's from the vacancy, then the presiding judge of the Court of Common Pleas of Seneca County has fifteen days to fill the vacancy. So I, I believe you can continue to debate, discuss, and vote this evening. You could also choose to adjourn the meeting and schedule another meeting to have further discussion and vote.
I feel like we're going to be better off if we settle this and, and move on.
I think the city's better off.
I do, too.
Can't go on forever.
I do, too.
I mean, technically it can, but.
It could, very well.
We can't let it go on forever.
And there's a box of what appears to be Easter chocolates over there. We may need them.
I'll take one right now, Brian.
So.
Oh, we know he likes candy.
Is there enough for everyone?
Reese's Peanut Butter Cup?
I suppose if I may, I, you know, I will, I will reiterate in an, in an attempt to, you know, strengthen support for who I believe to be our best candidate, that being Councilmember Yanatuno. There are things that mean a lot to me. And a lot of them are the importance of, of local government. And Dawn has served in some form or another with local government for an incredible amount of years with the school board, which is not an easy job whatsoever. And at the time of her service, it was not a compensated one. And I can also tell you how impressed I was when Dawn came, when there was a very highly charged issue a number of years ago. And those of you that were here will remember it. And Dawn came as a community member. She was off the board by that time. And she pleaded for a restoration of civility. And I feel as though that that is going to be in our best interest, a cheerleader and someone who will encourage civility and someone who will really just, just care for the city. And I, you know, probably shouldn't say this, but someone that will care for the city as only a mother can. And I also, with years of, you know, teaching the history classes and everything else, I don't think it's ever a bad idea to really strongly consider a, a, a female candidate. I, I think it is a wonderful idea. And more importantly, I just think the world of Dawn Yanatuno. And I think she's the one to get us through the next year and a half. Would anybody care to try to persuade on their end? Very good. Councilclerk Forrest, if you'd be so kind as to call the roll.
Councilmember Perry.
Zach Perkins.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Bryce Riggs.
Councilmember Gillig.
Dawn Yanatuno.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Dawn Yanatuno.
Councilmember Jones.
Bryce Riggs.
Councilmember Leopard.
Perkins.
Councilmember Perkins.
Zach Perkins.
Very good. Thank you. We still have not obtained the majority of four. This time, I'd like to open it up to additional discussion. Councilmember Perry.
Just trying to think out loud so we don't keep having the same vote outcome. If we were to vote it backwards, if we, could we do a vote where we vote to eliminate one candidate and then we have another vote to then vote on the final two?
I, I would say no, but I'll defer to the law director on that one.
Well, the, the, the process of voting is not defined by charter. However, you have, before the election started, you had an established procedure that you had discussion and you voted on and approved. So I think you should stay with that discussion.
Right.
To the end, and hopefully you will elect a mayor. You have to act by a majority of council members. So you have to have four.
So at this time, I would again encourage discussion. Further advocating, Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thought our motion was to end the discussion and go to a voice roll call vote. I thought that was a motion and it passed. I didn't make a note. Six to zero, seven to zero. Now we're going back into discussion mode after we voted to end discussion?
No.
I want some clarification on that.
Oh, absolutely. No, that is, that is an extraordinarily fair question. I suppose I don't know how else we, we, we come to a consensus. We are on which ballot now?
Sixth.
Okay. What can there, what can there be aside from, from further discussion? I suppose, you know, that, that would just be my thought process. Anything for, Councilmember Perry.
Thank you. I feel like, you know, this process is going to be extremely hard, especially for, you know, the, the people that are getting two, to then get a third, and then to go another one. You know what I'm saying? So I don't know what the next step is. I feel like we're just going to be doing this a lot. But I'm certainly open to suggestions or, I mean, we can keep casting a vote. I don't know. Eventually somebody is going to change your mind. And maybe in some cases, it'll have to be two people.
Yeah, very well said. And there's also the added wrinkle in the room that I'm gone as of tomorrow. And, you know, is that, is this something that, that should be resolved now? Or is this something best left to another special meeting? Or we continue to have conversation and we continue to, to cast ballots? I suppose those are our options. Councilmember Perry.
Say we don't elect somebody tonight. I think the process is the Democratic Committee will replace Ben Sieg, correct?
That is correct.
And so we would then have to wait.
Within thirty days.
Within thirty days.
Yeah.
This has to be filled by, what, August 4th?
Correct.
So we might not even have anybody.
So.
Yeah, they'll have to try to act before then if they can.
So then trying to get to four for somebody is going to be extremely hard. So, yeah, I guess we just keep hashing it out and see what happens.
We're gonna have to judge right now.
Yeah, because it's either us or the Common Pleas Court judge. So I'll just, we'll just keep that in mind. Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Having another meeting and I thought to myself, and again, I agreed with it, we were going to meet on the first and have interviews. We're going to meet on the 11th and have interviews and vote right away. I thought that process was fast. But I should have spoke up two weeks ago and not worry about it tonight. To adjourn, call another meeting, I don't think it's fair to Mr. Cole. He was here following the procedure. And then to get input from the community or whatever we need to do to get by this, I think it's a disservice to him. I say, follow the charter, follow the procedure, continue voting.
Very good. Any additional discussion? Okay, I will ask Councilclerk Forrest to take a roll on the vote, please.
Councilmember Perry.
Zach Perkins.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Bryce Riggs.
Councilmember Gillig.
Zach Perkins.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Dawn Yanatuno.
Councilmember Jones.
Bryce Riggs.
Councilmember Leopard.
Perkins.
Councilmember Perkins.
Zach Perkins.
That will be four to two to one. And that will mean, congratulations, Mayor Perkins.
Thank you.
Gosh. Anything you'd like to say, bud?
Lot of courage in this room, not just from the candidates who are, you know, going through a whole lot. City Council, I know people have been flooded with emails and love for this person, hate for this person, and back and forth. I've heard it and heard it and heard it for every day for two weeks plus. So I thank everyone for putting their neck out there and being a huge target for every single person in the community, twenty thousand people, to, you know, talk to you and persuade you to do whatever it is they wanted. You know, I would, I would do my absolute best. I will work with Bryce and Aaron, the commissioners and everyone, on all the council members, of course. You guys know I always have an open door. You can always talk to me. So thank you all. I'm just, a lot of gratitude. So.
Mayor Boe.
Congratulations. Yeah, again, I thank you to, to Bryce Riggs as well. And, and again, Mr. Cole, Ryan Cole, for, for your interest. And I know this was a, kind of an awkward process being open to the city and, and, and to you, Mr. Perkins, to Councilwoman Perkins. And so, and, and Councilwoman Yanatuno, I, I, I thank all of you. And, you know, it's not easy. So, but congratulations, Mr. Perkins. And we'll, we're excited.
If I'm, if I may ask, Councilmember Perkins, would you like to extend to the August 4th as a start date? You know, I know you're going to have to go home and, and talk with.
I'm going to have to let my kids decide that. I, I don't, I don't know. It would be before then, of course. I wouldn't want it to get that close. One thing I did want to say is it's one thing to follow Aaron Montz, which is intimidating in itself. I'm completely up for the challenge. But I now have to follow the first female mayor also. And that's getting out of hand real quick here. So, but thank you, everyone.
Yeah, Mr. President, if I could add that Zach Perkins will begin once an oath is administered. And so we'll have to determine when that will be with his schedule.
Okay.
For thirty days, the acting mayor will, can continue to serve. So I think you need to work on and tell the city when you'd like to begin.
Okay.
So that the transition then could happen on the date that you choose.
Okay, perfect.
Councilmember Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just, I'd just like to reiterate, we're going to have two positions to fill now, City Council. We got a D and we got an R. So.
And a new pro temp.
Yes. Yes. So candidates, you can keep that in mind. Ben, I'd just like to offer my best wishes to you and your, and your family. You know, you've been a breath of fresh air at a city council. I mean, you bring, you bring to us a perspective that we probably hadn't seen before. And I was so proud, two years ago, I was so proud of you and your son at the memorial service and for Veterans Day. So proud of both of you placing flowers on the wreath. And I was even more proud when I recommended you to be the host of the service this year. And what a great job that you did. Now we're going to have to find somebody else for that. So.
No, I.
Unless you want to come back.
I would come back for as long as, you know, that was one of the greatest, that was, outside of being a dad, that was the greatest honor of my life, to be, to be quite frank. And, you know, being a husband to Aaron, that was pretty amazing. You know, as, as Coach Cole said, you know, nobody wants a six-one shooting guard. No military recruiter has wanted a 280-pound guy with a bad vision. No military recruiter has wanted a 280-pound guy with bad vision and flat feet. So I did not have the opportunity to serve. So being able to serve in that role was quite a joy. And I thank you, Councilmember Leopard. Yes, sir.
I misspoke when I said memorial veterans, because that is not true. Memorial Day is to honor those that fought and died. And Veterans Day is to honor those who served.
Absolutely.
And I understand that, I just misspoke.
Oh, no, absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, that's been another honor, you know, being on here with so many folks that have been in the service, you know, Jim, yourself, Rich, Ken. It's pretty humbling. It's pretty humbling.
You know, Ben, I thought we'd die on here together.
There's still a chance. I have been very ill.
Don't even, don't even.
Well, that's the other thing. If I could just say that, I know we're under other business at this point. I doubt I'm still here without the prayers and the support of the community. You know, long COVID got real nasty, real nasty. And that followed, you know, having to say bye to mom as she... As words failed her and logic failed her towards the end, you know, having to see that was pretty tough. And, you know, losing her was pretty tough. And then when the COVID hit, I just didn't have a chance. But I'm still here, you know, in large part because of the folks downstairs at the fire department, you know, coming and getting me twice at my house. But I'm also here because of the prayers and support of my friends and neighbors. And for that, I'm eternally grateful. Any other business to discuss? Councilmember Yanatuno.
Well, I'd like to offer my congratulations to future Mayor Perkins and to tell you that you have my total support. And let's keep moving forward.
Perfect, will do. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilkins.
I would also like to echo Dawn. Congratulations. I think you're going to do an excellent job and you have my full support as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Perry.
First, I want to thank you, Council President, tonight. You've served the city very well. Everything is always well thought out. You have a way with words, for sure. I think that's why they keep bugging you to host about everything they can. And we're going to miss you on council. You always gave us a good way to think about things. So I wish you all the best to you and your family and hope to see you around town quite a bit. We'll miss you on the history tours, that's for sure. So and also congratulations to Mayor Perkins, so.
Thank you.
Outstanding. Anybody else this evening? So one final thought, just because I've got the microphone for another few moments. Tiffin rebuilds and Tiffin builds. And I just, I think about this a lot, especially with this being our 200th year. We carved a city out of a forest in the woods. It was so thick that it was said that horses would scrape their sides as they attempted to pass through what we now know as Tiffin. You know, this area isn't even largely used by Native Americans for permanent settlements. This is the wild and all that entails. And our forefathers said, "The heck with that." And they came here and they created this community. And they created this community through a number of wars, including a civil war. And then I think of modern day and I think of Tiffin in the pandemic. And I think of Tiffin in the flood. You know, we lost 19 souls, but the reason why we didn't lose a lot more is because we had folks in Tiffin that were hooking up canoes and ropes and risking their lives. And then same thing rolls around when the pandemic hits. You know, we hear gloom and doom stories of generational restaurants closing. And Tiffin says, "The heck with that." And they support local. And I don't know how many, if any, businesses we lost because the people of Tiffin said, "The heck with that." And it's just been an honor to serve this community. I certainly won't be a stranger. And God bless you all. God bless Tiffin, Ohio. We are adjourned at 8:12 PM.